Because I'm gonna say what we thought was like. Thirty-five thousand dollars.
It was sheriff. It was sheriff. Yeah, it was sheriff.
Nothing.
Not like Dan was on that. Had the whole research. How much did it cost? Thirty-six? No matter what it is. Eighty-four?
Yeah. Oh.
You guys ready? Call order counts meeting for November twenty-second. If everyone would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The man standing for prayer.
Dear Lord, bless the decisions of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Come here for a roll call.
Mr. Stangle?
Here.
Mr. Ravellette?
He has an absence.
All right. Mr. McNeese?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Gornau?
Present.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove. Adopt the agendas presented.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, second reading is three.
Make a motion for third and final reading of ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one. Second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Our question?
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to adopt the agendas presented.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
And by vote of six to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval that October twenty-fifth minutes?
Make a motion to approve the October twenty-fifth minutes.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Our question?
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
And by vote of six to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval that October twenty-fifth minutes?
Make a motion to approve the October twenty-fifth minutes.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Our question?
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, the three. Petitions, memorials, remonstrances? Send them, we'll go to committee chair reports.
I have one, uh, the eight now, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, we had no opportunity. And, uh, the next meeting will be January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Any other committee reports? Report of city officers. We'll move to old business first up as ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes for the Vincennes Police Co-SEP lead stipend. First reading was November the eighth.
Make a motion to read and approve for second or third reading, ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one. Second.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to read second reading of the ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes for the Vincennes Police Co-SEP lead stipend, containing sections one, two, and three.
Discussion?
Remember all the events too, we've, uh, have this plan set up so we can put that money in that fund. Right. Next too, we've got to set it up that way.
That's correct, to better keep track of where the funds are coming from and where we're paying to.
And allow you to be able to go report to the state for those funds and how they're used, correct?
Correct.
All right. One good.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, third and final reading of ordinance seventeen twenty-one passes. Next is ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes for the state administered CDBG program. First reading was the eighth.
Make a motion for second reading of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions improvements.
You had your first reading the eighth.
Make a motion for second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions improvements.
You had your first reading the eighth.
Make a motion for second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city, providing for the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, containing sections one through twenty-eight.
Discussion?
And that's the TV. And that's the middle.
And again, this is the eight-point-seven million dollar water tower, water line replacement work being done, one-point-five million coming from our, our dollars.
We've had Kirk come in and explain the project to us, we've had a couple discussions on this, I think everybody's pretty clear, could go on this.
Question?
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, second reading is three.
Make a motion for third and final reading of ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, establishing a fund for the city of Vincennes for the Vincennes Police Co-SEP lead stipend in cooperation with Good Samaritan Hospital, sections one through three.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, third and final reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one passes. Move on to business updates.
Okay, uh, the discussion with our local businesses this week, uh, they've had another good week, obviously, except for Thanksgiving holidays, uh, things seem to be going well, I know that a lot of discussions about, uh, supply chains and issues there, but they, the businesses around here have done a pretty good job of being able to keep those up, um, as of right now, a lot of numbers are up in our businesses, which is a good thing, like I said, we hope this kind of continues throughout the holiday season, we fully expect it to, but with that, we also remind everybody to shop local, that's kind of our thing, so things are going well for our local businesses.
Okay. Move on to new business, first is resolution six twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, council authorizing planning efforts for the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing matters.
Make a motion to read and approve resolution six twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to read and approve resolution six twenty twenty-one.
Resolution number six, uh, twenty twenty-one, resolution regarding planning efforts and recent stimulus allocations, uh, the city of Vincennes, Indiana council authorizing planning efforts, and this is in conjunction with Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters, sections one, two, and three.
Small business Saturday, is this? Yes.
Uh, metric updates, county metric update. And I believe this one deals with the next grant that the senior center got, where they are going to actually add on to the, the, add in addition to their building, so we have to have this resolution pass forward back to me.
Right, and I know separately we don't like to do resolutions, but this is the time-sensitive one that we've got to be able to do so they can go to that next step, right, so that's why it's set up that way.
Another discussion?
Question?
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes, as well.
And by vote of six to zero, second reading of ordinance eighteen twenty-one passes.
Uh, make a motion for third and final reading of ord- ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one.
Got a motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Vincennes, Indiana, establishing funds for the city of Vincennes for the state administered CDBG program, sections one, two, and three.
Discussion?
Question?
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, third and final reading of ordinance eighteen twenty one passes. Next is ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions improvements. You had your first reading the eighth.
Make a motion for second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Motion by President Salter, second by Vice President Grove to have second reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city, providing for the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, sections one through twenty-eight.
Discussion?
All, all in discussion point is this does not raise rates in any way, shape, or form.
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, third and final reading of ordinance eighteen twenty one passes. Next is ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Vincennes authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of certain additions and extensions and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city, providing for the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, sections one through twenty-eight. Discussion?
All, all in discussion point is this does not raise rates in any way, shape, or form.
Question?
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by vote of six to zero, third and final reading of ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-one passes and will be moved to area plan. Next is fee discussion.
All right, so I've asked Kathy to discuss with us, um, some of our fees, uh, we, we seem kind of under the problem, or almost kind of a coupon problem, we got, um, issues that we're having with the city that, you know, people are, that fee on, like, let's say that we're parking on sidewalk, we're parking on curb, we have certain ordinances that you have to pay a penalty because you do that, well, that fee is, you know, either too small, uh, to really deter the behavior that we would like to deter, and it's almost pointless for us to try to go after it because it's too small, because then in the end, we're spending more money going after it, so, uh, Kathy's been having some discussions and has been looking into this for us, um, as we kind of go forward, um, she's also, after she talks about the fees, she's going to talk about, uh, updating to, um, what would you say, our benefit?
Employee benefits.
Employee benefits.
Yes.
As one of the steps that we need to do, uh, before we update the handbook, so we have to do that first before we do the handbook, so these are things that we need to finish up before the end of the year, and Kathy's got the information for you, but Kathy?
Okay, well, I've been asked to look at a couple different things, permits, uh, fees, so forth, um, so I've kind of looked at a couple different areas that, um, I thought maybe, you know, we could look at, and things that people have asked me to look at, so the permits through the inspector's office, we're still doing our research on that, but we're basically looking not so much residentially, but commercially, to kind of review our rates on those, we are kind of low, haven't really updated those in a long time, so we're kind of looking at surrounding communities and kind of our own thoughts on that, so I will send all the research that I do, I'll kind of send that out to everybody, and we can kind of do a little email chain, if anyone has any thoughts or anything more they want me to do on that, just kind of let me know, direct me, yes.
Kathy, we, at the area plan commission, we discussed something very similar with what Colt has to do in the permitting process there, uh, we raised those fees based on how much time Colt would have to spend on that particular, um, construction project, so a commercial project, we're certainly going to spend, our inspector's going to spend more time visiting those, we need to kind of figure out the time involved in that, so our fee reflects the time that he's being, his, he's being used there.
Correct.
And, and I, I'm sure we're way low, uh, on the amount of time that he spends on a job compared to what that costs.
I would think we are definitely low.
So, yeah, I guess that's part of it too, is having, uh, our inspector look at how much time he puts in on a particular job, uh, you know, uh, what inspections he has to do and follow through, uh, and then, uh, kind of come to a rough estimate of the cost associated with that, uh, per hour, uh, you know, his per-hour rate, so to speak.
Right.
Uh, and, and how much time he's using, that's the only way to fairly do that.
Right, I mean, that was our thought, is we just kind of wanted to review them all, look at them, you know, sometimes we haven't updated these in a long time.
Well, that goes the same in your office, how much time are your people spending to, to assess some, like, parking tickets come to you, right?
Correct.
And how long does it take you, uh, in, in, in this fee?
Well, the fee is twenty-five dollars, and, uh, we generally do not go after those that don't pay. So, the thought, and we don't issue that many either, we really don't.
Because it's not worth our time?
Because it's not really worth our time, so trust me, if you get a ticket, boy, you have really earned yourself that ticket, because we just don't issue those.
I guess that's the policy too, because it is worth our time, people are parking on curbs and parking on sidewalks, those things cost us money over time, whether we believe or not.
Correct, and it should be a deterrent.
It's a long-term cost that we have to pay. Parents, well, you rather have a win streak than this.
Yes.
Less than down curve after you do the curbs, then they tour the easement, it's a, a mud hole the entire way down there, so we've got to be able to handle on that.
So that's certainly something that we could use to update, um, a- and there certainly is a mechanism for us to go after those tickets, we just haven't done so in the past, but really, fees are only fair if everybody pays them.
Yeah.
A- and, you know, so if you're going to go after it and you want people to do it, it's only fair if you do have it, that you kind of go after it, if everybody should be paying it, if you're being penalized, you should pay your penalty, um, so we have that, um, updated on the golf cart registration, I don't think that we've ever updated that since we put that ordinance into place, uh, it barely covers the cost of our stickers that we put on the back of the golf carts, so I kind of am looking up into that, um, most places charge fifty, I don't think we need to go that high, we're not looking to m- make money off of it, I just want to do a better system to kind of track and kind of keep up with it, the police do inspect our golf carts and, you know, kind of maybe let everybody know what we expect as well, maybe, you know, these are our rules, if you're going to drive on the city streets, please make sure you're a licensed driver, it's in our ordinance.
So I'm a little, um, familiar to this, how, each year, those have to be registered and inspected?
Correct, all golf carts should be yearly, not inspected yearly, but they should pay for that fee yearly.
Okay.
Um, correct, like our parking fees, that signs, we, that's a yearly thing, and we have a handful of people, bless you, that pay your fees religiously, but not everybody.
They have to have a sign if they're not paying yet.
We don't know where they all are, there's, you know.
Well, that's something we, I think that at some point we need to discuss as, uh, even more of our surroundings as well, I, I think there's a lot of areas that are.
That's definitely something that we could discuss as well.
That's a job that.
Um, so we do have that, parking tickets, now this kind of seems ridiculous, but our mechanical license, we have an ordinance and we've been collecting on it, but really unless you send us a check, we have no idea where they are, well, I mean, we know, I go out, I see where they are, but I, I know where I get a check from, I know who pays, but we don't have any way of proving, having people proven that they've paid the fee, if you go to other places, they have like little stickers they put on, say their dart machines, their pool tables, whatever, all those, they're all supposed to be paying a fee for that, and really, they should be getting a little sticker in return, the city inspector can go out, he collects the fee, and he puts the sticker on there, everybody knows you're good till next year, it's n- it's an unfair fee if everybody's not going to pay it, only some people pay it, so do we go after those that don't, because some do, uh, and it's not that, and it's not that big a fee, it's very insignificant.
Why do we charge fees for those anyway?
Because these are our ordinances, I think it's because they're making money in the city of Vincennes, it's kind of a way to go after probably property taxes, you know, since you don't really go after property taxes on it, it's a way to kind of get a little fee.
Okay, no, I mean, it's kind of all of them to replace what we've locked up for, we've got an ordinance and we aren't following what point the ordinance, so we need to make sure that ordinance is being followed or we got to change the ordinance.
Correct. Uh, so there's that, uh, okay, license for food trucks, we don't really have any type of license right now for food trucks, so we have no way of kind of seeing who's coming into the city, where they're setting up, do they have their basic requirements that they should have?
They, they do have to have a, a health board, they have to, they have to. I think they are permitted through the county, through the county.
Correct.
They have to be inspected and permitted through the county, not from the city.
Yes, the city doesn't do anything, so that might be something we want to look at, you know, uh.
And people may ask why that's of interest to us, if they're in a high density area or a place with a lot of traffic that could cause other traffic issues, we'd want to feel the level where they're at.
Right, for safety as well, I mean, we want to make sure we kind of have a track of who's coming into our town, and who's, who, where are you setting up at, and does everyone know what everyone's doing? Uh, okay.
You're looking at what other cities are doing.
Correct, I'm, I'm looking at a lot of what, and cities our size, close to us, not far away, I'm not concerned with what they're doing far away from here, I want to see what everyone close to us is doing, um, so some people are kind of progressive that way, it's good to kind of just see what everybody else is doing, and, you know, we certainly could tailor that to city residents and out-of-town residents, because that's where we're really talking about here, we're not interested in taxing our locals, but we are concerned if you're coming from out of town, where are you coming from, so, um, all right, so the other two ordinances that we, I will be bringing at the next meeting, we'll talk about grant requests, so anytime someone fills out grants, it's important that they kind of let my office know where they intend to get their matching part of the money from, and that they know if they're going to apply for this grant, that they have to be on the hook for some of this, they can't just willy-nilly do these things, I have to have this paperwork so that I can fill out reports to the state, and if we are awarded anything, I have to make sure I have all the documentation, or my office gets in trouble.
And this is more for state board of accounts.
This is, this is a state board of accounts thing, this is not me, uh, yes, this is, this is me trying to make sure we more comply with what they're wanting us to do.
I mean, and not to get too much in the weeds, but isn't that why you look at these too?
Absolutely, if we have them on the books and we're not following it, what are we doing with some of these things?
Right, exactly.
Correct, uh, and then, of course, the last one will be an update to the employee benefits ordinance, that's one that's been in place for years, but this will just be an update, it's been updated in ninety-four, ninety-eight, two thousand four, two thousand five, and so we're going to update it, now it will actually match the handbook, up till.
That is, that's very important.
And that's the important thing, up till now, it has not exactly matched the handbook, so we could use any one of these four ordinances to decide how we're going to decide benefits, well, that's not right, there needs to be one way we do it, that way it's all consistent, and it had to do with previous administrations, just years of different things coming down the pipe, but this way, everybody has all the same, a- and it just puts it more in line, that way there's no more inconsistency with our ordinance versus our handbook.
I know you put a lot of time into this too, and I know there is too, but.
Yes.
I mean, this is not like a rollback of benefits.
No, it is not.
Matter of fact, vacation benefits.
This was specifically targeted also to help, uh, improve our benefits, so we gave you vacation, more vacation time sooner, we give you vacation time at the start, it's an incentive to have people come work at the city and stay, make this their career and stay here at the city.
And it's not, it's more, please, and not get in the fire, that we make sure that, uh, the benefits are there that, we make them understand. Uh, Kathy, one last question, would, would we be able to pass the fees that you decide on as one ordinance, or will that be separate ordinance for each?
Well, we would, some of these will have to be separate, of course, the, uh, golf cart, that's already ordinance, we would just update that ordinance, and, um, you know, food trucks, that would be a new ordinance if we did something like that, because we don't currently have that, permits, we're going to do an update to the permits, so probably some of these are going to be separated.
Dave, could we, like, with the food trucks, we already have a vendor fee, basically, do those things we rolled into one ordinance to kind of encompass that?
Or not? Our vendor fee is for, uh, the.
Okay.
Easy.
Hey, uh, vacation, we add to the, the current food truck.
So our fee reflects the time that he's being, is he's being used there.
Correct.
And and I'm sure we're way low, uh, on the amount of time that he spends on a job compared to what that cost is.
I would think we are definitely low.
So, yeah, I guess that's part of it, too, is having, uh, our inspector look at how much time he puts in on a particular job. You know, uh, what inspections he has to do and follow through, uh, and then, uh, kind of come to a rough estimate of the cost associated with that. Per hour, uh, you know, his per hour rate, so to speak.
Right.
And and how much time he's using, that's the only way to fairly do that.
Right, I mean, that was our thought, is we just kind of wanted to review them all, look at them, you know, sometimes we haven't updated these in a long time.
Well, that goes the same in your office. How much time are your people spending to to assess some, uh, how do we, kind of, like, parking tickets come to you, right?
Correct.
And how long does it take you and and then what's the fee?
Well, the fee is twenty-five dollars, and, uh, we generally do not go after those that don't pay.
I said that.
So the thought, and we don't issue that many either, we really don't.
Because it's not worth our time.
Because it's not really worth our time, so trust me, if you get a ticket, boy, you have really earned yourself that ticket. Because we just don't issue those.
That's the policy, too, because it is worth our time. People are parking on curbs and parking on sidewalks, those things cost us money over time, whether we believe it or not.
Correct, and it should be a deterrent.
Long-term cost that we have.
Parents, you rather have wings for your vehicles.
Yes.
Plus the downturn after the the curbs, then they tour the easement, it's a mud hole the entire way down there, so it's, we've got to handle on that.
So that's certainly something that we could use to update, um, a- and there certainly is a mechanism for us to go after those tickets. We just haven't done so in the past, but really, fees are only fair if everybody pays them.
Yeah.
A- and, you know, so if you're going to go after it and you want people to do it, it's only fair if you do have it that you kind of go after it. If everybody should be paying it, if you're being penalized, you should pay your penalty. Um, so we had that, um, updated on the golf cart registration. I don't think that we've ever updated that since we put that ordinance into place. Uh, it barely covers the cost of our stickers that we put on the back of the golf carts. So I kind of am looking up into that, um, most places charge fifty, I don't think we need to go that high. We're not looking to m- make money off of it, I just want to do a better system to kind of track and kind of keep up with it. The police do inspect our golf carts and, you know, kind of maybe let everybody know what we expect as well. Maybe, you know, these are our rules, if you're going to drive on the city streets, please make sure you're a licensed driver, it's in our ordinance.
So I'm a little, um, figuring this out, each year, those have to be registered and inspected?
Correct, all golf carts should be yearly, not inspected yearly, but they should pay for that fee yearly.
Okay.
Um. Correct, like our parking fees, that signs, we, that's a yearly thing, and we have a handful of people, bless you, that pay your fees religiously, but not everybody. We don't know where they all are, there's, you know.
I think that at some point, we need to discuss as a, even more of our signings as well, I I think.
That's definitely something that we could discuss as well.
It's a job that.
Um, so we do have that, parking tickets. Now, this kind of seems ridiculous, but our mechanical license, we have an ordinance and we've been collecting on it, but really, unless you send us a check, we have no idea where they are. I mean, we know, I go out, I see where they are, but I I know where I get a check from, I know who pays. But we don't have any way of proving, having people proven that they've paid the fee. If you go to other places, they have like little stickers they put on, say their dart machines, their pool tables, whatever, all those, they're all supposed to be paying a fee for that. And really, they should be getting a little sticker in return. The city inspector can go out, he collects the fee, and he puts the sticker on there, everybody knows you're good till next year. It's n- it's an unfair fee if everybody's not going to pay it, only some people pay it. So do we go after those that don't, because some do? Uh, and it's not that, and it's not that big a fee, it's very insignificant.
Why do we charge fees for those anyway?
Because these are our ordinances, I think it's because they're making money in the city of Vincennes, it's kind of a way to go after probably property taxes, you know, since you don't really go after property taxes on it, it's a way to kind of get a little fee.
Okay, no, I mean, that's kind of all the ones we've placed a little block out for, we've got an ordinance that we aren't following, and what's the point of the ordinance? So we need to make sure that the ordinance is being followed, or we got to change the ordinance.
Correct. Uh, so there's that, uh, okay, license for food trucks. We don't really have any type of license right now for food trucks, so we have no way of kind of seeing who's coming into the city, where they're setting up. Do they have their basic requirements that they should have?
They they do have to have a a health board, they have to, they have to.
They are permitted through the county, through the county.
Correct.
Be inspected and permitted through the county, not from the city.
Yes, the city doesn't do anything, so that might be something we want to look at, you know, uh.
And people may ask why that's of interest to us, if they're in a high-density area or a place with a lot of traffic, that could cause other traffic issues. We'd want to field them and know where they're at.
Right, for safety as well, I mean, we want to make sure we kind of have a track of who's coming into our town, and who's, who, where are you setting up at? And does everyone know what everyone's doing? Uh, okay.
You're looking at what other cities are doing.
Correct, I'm I'm looking at a lot of what, and cities our size, close to us, not far away, I'm not concerned with what they're doing far away from here. I want to see what everyone close to us is doing. Um, so some people are kind of progressive that way, it's good to kind of just see what everybody else is doing. And, you know, we certainly could tailor that to city residents and out-of-town residents, because that's where we're really talking about here. We're not interested in taxing our locals, but we are concerned if you're coming from out of town, where are you coming from? So, um, all right. So the other two ordinances that we, I will be bringing at the next meeting, we'll talk about grant requests. So anytime someone fills out grants, it's important that they kind of let my office know where they intend to get their matching part of the money from, and that they know if they're going to apply for this grant, that they have to be on the hook for some of this. They can't just willy-nilly do these things. I have to have this paperwork so that I can fill out reports to the state, and if we are awarded anything, I have to make sure I have all the documentation, or my office gets in trouble.
And this is more for State Board of Accounts.
This is, this is a State Board of Accounts thing, this is not me, uh, yes, this is, this is me trying to make sure we more comply with what they're wanting us to do.
I mean, and not to get too much in the weeds, but isn't that a lot of these fees, too?
Absolutely, if we have them on the books and we're not following it, what are we doing with some of these things? Correct. Uh, and then, of course, the last one will be an update to the employee benefits ordinance. That's one that's been in place for years, but this will just be an update. It's been updated in ninety-four, ninety-eight, two thousand four, two thousand five, and so we're going to update it. Now it will actually match the handbook, up till.
That's very important.
And that's the important thing, up till now, it has not exactly matched the handbook. So we could use any one of these four ordinances to decide how we're going to decide benefits, well, that's not right. There needs to be one way we do it, that way it's all consistent. And it had to do with previous administrations, just years of different things coming down the pipe, but this way, everybody has all the same. A- and it just puts it more in line, that way there's no more inconsistency with our ordinance versus our handbook.
I know you put a lot of time into this, too, and America, too, but.
Yes.
I mean, this is not like a rollback of benefits.
No, it is not.
Matter of fact, vacation benefits improve.
This was specifically targeted also to help, uh, improve our benefits. So we gave you vacation, more vacation time sooner, we give you vacation time at the start. It's an incentive to have people come work at the city and stay, make this their career and stay here at the city.
And it's not, it's more, please, and not get into fire, that we make sure that, uh, the benefits are there that we'll make them on the stretch.
All right, Kathy, one last question, would would we be able to pass the fees that you decide on as one ordinance, or will that be separate ordinance for each?
Well, we would, some of these will have to be separate, of course, the, uh, golf cart, that's already ordinance, we would just update that ordinance. And, um, you know, food trucks, that would be a new ordinance if we did something like that, because we don't currently have that. Permits, we're going to do an update to the permits, so probably some of these are going to be separated.
Dave, because we, like, with the food trucks, you clearly have a vendor fee, basically, could those things be rolled into one ordinance to kind of encompass that? You know, before not.
Our vendor fee is provided by the county, which is.
Okay. Easy enough.
Transient merchants.
Yeah, that's something. Hey, uh, vacation, so can we add to the current food truck?
This is not a review, you couldn't.
It's a visionary.
But this goes back to, uh, Kathy was saying about, that, you can look at one place or you can look at ten places, this is looking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know, that way they can see if they're following the ordinance, and if they follow the same law.
We do currently have a transient merchant fee, as scary as that sounds, um, but, and that is generally for people that come to town short-term. Three months, you're just here, you're selling Kirby vacuums or magazines door-to-door. W- we do that as a way to kind of keep track of who's coming to the city, what area are you going to? Because people will call the city and say, hey, someone's been to my door, trying to sell whatever, do you know about this? We would like to know, especially during the pandemic, we denied people access to go out and go door-to-door. Uh, they thought it was their right, but I think it's people's right to not be bothered during the pandemic. Uh, so that might would be something we need to update or look at if we're trying to roll it into that transient merchant, because that kind of is almost implying something different currently.
Hey, I want to get back to the vacation time in each one of them, is each department then responsible for maintaining that, what a employee does? Vacation lives, if they use their three weeks or their three weeks, whatever, each each department?
Each department is, but my department also, because I do the payroll, so of course, they have what they do, but they have to turn it in, so we do have to work together on that.
Right, so the plan would be that this will be presented to us for our next meeting for, for, like, what we're going to do is.
Correct.
Readings on all these.
Correct. And I will send out emails th- in the next couple days to kind of let you know all my research, and then you kind of, if you have any more questions, any more direction, you just let me know.
All right, so we're looking at fees, ordinance updates, uh, grant update.
Correct.
And, uh, benefit, right?
Correct.
Four different things, obviously, probably a little bit more, but that'll be the, um.
Yes.
Proofing it very good.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to claims.
Uh, make a motion to pay claims in the amount of five hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion by President Salters, second by Vice President Grove, pay claims in an amount of five hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents. Any discussion on claims?
Question.
Mr. Garnell.
Yes.
Mr. Grove.
Yes.
Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Mr. McNeese.
Yes.
Mr. Salters.
Yes.
Mr. Stengel.
Yes.
And by a vote of six to zero, claims are paid miscellaneous.
Um, I know we usually wait till our next meeting to plan the last council meeting of the year, but Kathy has got that scheduled, obviously, it kind of goes with her department, and how long we can go until we can get that for the year, the next council meeting of the year will be twenty-eight. All right, so that's Tuesday, right, Kathy?
Yes, it is.
Tuesday to twenty-eight, that's six, um, so like.
I I know I will be on, I mean, usually in the last meeting, we always just do claims, so I kind of plan on that, we were, we were doing it on the day.
Yep.
Actually. That will be at noon, that will be at noon, not six noon, thank you.
Noon.
All right.
Real quick, under miscellaneous, I want to mention that when I said approval of the minutes, I said October twenty-fifth, it was November eighth minutes. And my packet is listed as the twenty-fifth, but I've checked.
Okay.
They are the new minutes, it's.
The date that was.
Date that was.
The date on top of the packet was wrong, so. We don't need to redo those, do we, Dave?
No.
The correction. Okay.
She is describing her there, it's Kathy's.
Okay. We will move on to public comment. Come to the podium and state your name and address and.
Yes. Um, my name is Betsy Ervin, and my address is eight four five one North Pierce Road in Bruceville. And I'm just here tonight to give the updated COVID vaccine, um, injuries and deaths. And before I do that, I'd just like to share with you, um, a mother's story that's told through Twitter. Um, May eighth, I'm a teacher with a few science degrees, all three of my kiddos will be vaccinated as soon as they are able. May nineteenth, my fourteen-year-old just got his first vaccination today, we are so thankful. June twenty-fourth, my son was one of the unlucky ones, and he developed mito- myocarditis after his second dose. He was monitored in the hospital for three days. I am not making light of it, and I can't pretend to know what pain he felt, however, I asked him if he is still happy to be vaccinated. His answer was a astounding yes. My younger two children will also be vaccinated when eligible, I am more fearful of the Delta variant than myocarditis. July sixteenth, okay, I'm not an expert, as a parent, I don't think that the risk of myocarditis and its severity is being adequate adequately conveyed. I had no idea that mild meant four days in the hospital and cardiology visits for the indefinite future, different issue, I guess. July twenty-fourth, Twitter is brutal. From the beginning, I have advocated for vaccination as I believe it's a way to control the pandemic. However, when I share that my son got myocarditis from his vaccination, I get blocked. I'm sorry my son's adverse event doesn't fit your agenda. July twenty-seventh, my son's new shirt came for immunity and all I got was myocarditis and a mask. October eighth, I used to shame people for, people for not getting vaccinated, and so my son was hospitalized with a vaccine-induced mito- myocarditis. Life has a way of humbling you. This mother's story and many more like hers is why we feel it's so important to get this information out. So here's the new stats as of today. The total adverse injuries are three hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty, this is for Indiana. The deaths are one hundred and forty-one, the hospitalizations are twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty. Birth defects and miscarriages are twelve, and the teen injuries are four hundred and ninety-six. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah.
I can probably talk back here, Mayor, and be heard, okay? Gene Williams, I live at nineteen oh-three College Avenue. Um, an issue was brought up here a while ago that I want to make a comment about, you were talking about licensing food trucks and out-of-town vendors. About eighteen months ago, Walmart had a group of people in from Texas, they was two or three van loads of people, and they were selling stuff, and they were, they were claiming to be donating it, money to do all these good things, I couldn't find anything on the internet about them, what I did find was not good. I talked to the manager at Walmart, and I told her that I thought it was a sham, and they were taking advantage of the people of Knox County. She told me that if I didn't settle down and calm down and stay away from them, she would have me put off the property and banned from Walmart, which was okay, I left. But the point of it is, Walmart has got a policy that if Benton, Arkansas says it's okay, then people can come in here to the local store and do it. So when somebody's at Walmart selling something out front, we need to see who it is and exactly what they're doing. Those people need to be paying, because they can't drive three vehicles, ten or twelve people from southern Texas to Vincennes, Indiana, and sell trinkets and be afford to donate money to anybody, common sense tells me that, maybe I don't have any common sense, thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Any other public comment? Not, for the good of the order?
All right, good with your time, Councilman Grove, District One.
So, I got a couple, not as many as last time, but, uh, finally, uh, another restaurant to Main Street.
Yes, Frank's.
So we did not, uh, didn't have time to skip out for lunch, but, uh, I've.
Don't be nervous.
That's great. Um, uh, the art sculpture at Iorg's was removed, painted, and brought back. I was watching it kind of fade, and I was a little, little discouraged about the appearance of that, but they removed it and cleaned it, and it's back, so it looks fantastic. But I think it's just totally, even more of art sculpture than just one, so, but, um, just, Salters, just do that.
All right, thank you, Captain Grove, all right, District Two?
Uh, good to see Greg Park hustling again with, bustling with, um, holiday decorations, and also folks around in the district also decorating their homes, it's a sign of good things. Um, just down the road, Burger King, Burger King is, uh, doing some utility work, and footers are laid, and, um, good news for the folks in the, in the northern part of the district, the, uh, the bridge is reopened again on Old Highway sixty-seven. Uh, I know that created a lot of, uh, people going up and down through the, those back roads or, uh, on Sixth Street on Forty-one. And also Martin's Auto Care and Body Shop, they're in their second phase of, uh, redoing that corner, really sprucing that up, making it really look nice, and so, uh, a lot of good things happening in the district.
Okay.
All right, thank you, all right, Captain Stengel, District Three.
District Three, there's, um, there's been something in my district that's been on my wish list for a long time, is to get rid of the old dilapidated building in the three-hundred block of South Thirteenth, just south of the railroad tracks in Thirteenth. Um, I had recently started working on it, getting rid of it, tearing it down, calling it off, and, uh, I'm sure all the neighbors around there are happy to see that old thing go. It's, uh, it's been a nice war for a long time, and, yeah, it's a long time, that's all I have.
All right, good. I'm sure Councilman Ravelatt will have this day lit media by when he comes back, so we'll go to District Five, Councilman Ravelatt.
All right, um. In District Five, uh, mom and pop shops back open again, so to encourage, again, uh, those that are shopping, s- you know, small, uh, small businesses, go out and shop, especially on Saturday, uh, encourage definitely shop local, shop in Vincennes, lots of good things out there, and lots of good people working hard. And just a shout out to the, just all the people in Vincennes, the city employees, a happy Thanksgiving, and, um, happy holiday season.
Thank you, Councilman McNeese, what do you got?
Uh, a couple different things, one, I, I want to add a couple for Brian, say, congratulations Mike Mrowski there at Frank's Barbecue, uh, he's worked with that building completely restored from the floorboards up, so it's really a good time to see him, to have that done. Art installations going up throughout our community, uh, we appreciate that very much. Um, RDC, we talked, uh, quite a bit about residential TIF, that will be coming before this, uh, toward some point in time, but there was also some other good news that, uh, it looks as if we will have another request, uh, for another residential TIF there, too, and then if you know, one of those things that are there, Broadway Place is under construction. If you've not been by, you can see all the construction taking place there, that is extremely good news. But I, I don't know if we're going to do anything more important than what we did for the municipal waterworks box tonight. Um, being able to do that, that's about as good of the order we can get, uh, supplying water to those homes that we hope to be building, so, well done, well done, why don't you sort this?
All right, so, um, I've got information for us, December seventeenth, from ten a.m. to six p.m. in front of Walmart, the belt batch returns for its fourth annual adventure, um, they have bedazzled the trophy in the county, I'm very disappointed with what they've done, so we need to get it back so we can take the bedazzled beads off of it, um, Mount Fair.
De-dazzle.
De-dazzle, yeah, I would like to de-dazzle it, thank you very much, exactly, a little bit of apology. Thank you, I appreciate that, uh, we also do have a lot of, uh, Christmas events coming up, we've got Christmas in the Park, the third and the fourth, we've got the Christmas Parade coming up, we've got the tent, uh, Christmas in Grouseland, um, the third, and then there's just a lit media list, I know that Santa's going to be at all different kind of places for pictures and all kinds of fun. Most wonderful time of the year, my friends, so.
Yeah, we're going to go six man.
Yeah, the fence is down Grouse, if you haven't driven past Grouse, it's awesome, I got to take a little inside look the other day, uh, it helps when the system all works there. And it looks, it looks amazing on the inside, it's really neat, and remember, the key thing I always kind of hit back at when they came to talk about us, about the donation, was they wanted it to look like Monticello, like, I mean, it's got, I mean, it's got that, well, it looks great. Uh, so if you haven't been by there, do that, I do, I, one of the favorite things about, I love Christmas in Grouse, it is awesome, candlelight stuff, flowers outside, it's really neat, so, got a lot of great stuff coming our way, Mayor, your turn.
You've already mentioned Christmas in the Park and the Christmas Parade, also on the tent, there's the Chris Kendall Market and Festival downtown, which there'll be vendors set up down on Patrick Henry Square, as well as a pep crawl, and, uh, I think decorating contest for the, uh, Gingerbread Man somewhere on Main Street.
At the Pantheon.
At the Pantheon, where they decided to have that, so that's going on in tents, and today, we sat down and ordered the flowers for Main Street for next spring.
Both planes in time.
Yes, and again, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. If nothing else, just made a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Where adjourned?
Forty-four.
Thanks, Curtis.
I chose, uh.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
The hope is that that's going to grow and eventually, I would say to Main Street, that's ready with Christmas, so it'll be a, a little place.